Yeah, you good, Tommy?
Yeah, you're good.
All right. We're ready to go, sir. Good evening, welcome. This meeting, sorry, this work session of the Pecoson City Council is called the Work. We have change in the order of the work session tonight. So we'll start off with our Director of Community Development, Mr. Wiley Horton. Wiley's going to talk with us about an amendment to Article 8.1 of the Planned Open Space Conservation Overlay District as found in Appendix A zoning of the Pecoson City Code of Ordinance. Wiley, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we are looking at amendments to Article 8-1. I thought before I went to the PowerPoint, I would talk just a little bit about what the Planned Open Space Conservation District is. It is not a, what we might call a cookie cutter lot by lot type subdivision. It does allow, and I'm going to borrow from the ordinance here, the district provides opportunities for development which reduces land consumption by use of open space, we'll talk about that later, reduces the amount of land devoted to streets and other impervious surfaces, provides and requires increased amounts of open space and recreational amenities, and encourages innovation in design. That's really what it's intended for. The open space district has not had any amendments to it since at least 2014. So we've been operating off the same ordinance for quite some time now. And in fact, with very few exceptions, pretty much every subdivision we've had minus the two and three lot divisions or family divisions or subdivisions have been open space developments. You know, what we have found in looking over the last, I don't know, the last several years, over planned open space developments, is some definite avenues, some better avenues to allow open space developments to still be a benefit to developers to pursue, but to make them more palatable in terms of blending in with the neighborhoods that they're in and that sort of thing. And that's what I'll cover tonight. If you'll, excuse me, I'll move to the.
Well, just remember you need to speak to the microphone, and every time you turn that way, you will not be able to do it.
Oh, yes. Okay, very brief PowerPoint, but has good information in it, I believe. First section we go to look at is 8.1-2, Planned Open Space Conservation District. This is where we, currently it's where in general dimensional density and design requirements. We're going to change density to lot size. All developments within the POC district shall be served by public water and public sewer, that's unchanged. Minimum area of any tract or combination of contiguous tracts of land proposed for a POSCD, you should say. Development shall be five acres. This is the change. Instead of going by a density formula, we're going to say the minimum lot size has to be 11,000 square feet. What we have found in looking at open space developments in the past is that you've had some very small lot sizes, much smaller than the surrounding neighborhoods, and really not very compatible with those neighborhoods. So 11,000 square feet is a quarter of an acre. For reference, in R2, the minimum lot size is 18,000 square feet. In R1, it's 20,000 square feet. And in RS, which is our highest residential district, it's 27,700 square feet, I believe, or 26.7, I'm sorry. We're striking number four, which talks about delineated and declared non-title wetlands may be used in meeting the net lot density requirements. Again, we're getting rid of density, so we're talking about a flat lot size. So density is not apropos. General dimensional lot size and design requirements, number four, because remember we got rid of the previous number four. Identified resource protection areas may not be included in individual building lot area other than such area that home construction may be permitted administratively and without variance. Here's how that works. You've got 4,000 square feet, that's 50 foot seaward. Anything in 50 foot seaward is going to need BZI approval or needs zoning variance. Maybe the side setbacks can't be made, or, you know, whatever. There's any numbers scenarios that might fit in there. 4,000 square feet, 50 foot landward and does not need a zoning variance, that can be included towards a lot size. And obviously, the 7,000 square feet out of the RPA added together with that 4,000 feet landward without need for zoning variance equals 11,000 square feet. So that's how we get our lot size. It's in other areas of the zoning ordinance, but I thought maybe it would be good to go over that and include that in here, too. Building setback, we're increasing the setbacks from 10 to 15 feet on side yards. And basically, this do eliminate homes sort of being built on top of each other or real close together. All accessory buildings shall be located as required already in our zoning ordinance. 61-23 of that ordinance. Minimum building setback line between any principal accessory building and any public or private street right of way shall be no less than 35 feet. What we have found is that by using the 20 feet, the homes are too close to the street as compared with the other homes that are preexisting in the neighborhood. Maximal height and minimum floor area, this is unchanged. For dwellings shall reflect the requirements of the underlay district. Open space and recreational area requirements, this is a pretty substantive change. Minimum of 50 feet of the gross land area must be devoted to open space. Land designated as the resource protection area buffer of 100 feet on either side of a resource protection area feature may be used to achieve open space calculation. This is the change. 50% of non-title wetlands, instead of 100%, which is current, may be used to achieve the required open space area with remainder being required to remain in their predevelopment state, also important. No portion of title, no portion of title wetlands shall be used to achieve the required open space area. So you can't have any title wetlands, and you can have 50% of the non-title wetlands. Here's how that works. Currently, that area sort of in that bold blue is what could be taking this open space under the current ordinance. Now, that would include, in this particular case, 50% of the open space area being in non-title wetlands indicated by the green. Under the proposed, the 50% open space, you can only use 50% of the non-title open space. So basically, you've got, in that upper area, you've got 50% of the open space, you've got 25% of the open space, and you end up taking another 25% in, well, let's see if I got a pointer that works. Ah, I do. That's the additional open space that's going to be required. The purpose of open space is to be available for active and passive recreation, and you really don't want that in your non-title wetlands, if you can help it. So this increases the open space requirement, will leave less amount of land for creation of lots. So, you know, obviously, non-title wetlands are not in nice little boxes, but for this example, they are. Okay. Stretch of design requirements largely left unchanged with the exception of number five. In order to ensure uniformity of design and preservation of property values, the zoning administrator may require the applicant to submit home design and home assessment information. The zoning administrator shall have the authority to approve or disapprove of any such home designs which shall be submitted in conjunction with the development plan. Any additional home designs other than those approved as part of the development plan shall acquire approval by the zoning administrator prior to it being operated for sale in such development. This is in order to make, this is to make sure, and of course, we're in, you know, these things tend to sell pretty well, but this is to ensure that, again, they're going to be visually compatible with the neighborhood, and you're not going to have, as one person came in, you're not, you're not going to have a difference in type of product offered in that particular subdivision than you would in, in the neighborhood that it's located That's pretty much the long and the short of it. I'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you. I think it's important, especially for folks who might be watching from home, to understand, Thomas, perhaps, the difference in density and lot size, and why that's important for these changes.
Well, density, the computation of density is based on the amount of open space that you have, and you have a density of, I believe it's, I'll have to go back to make sure that I speak truthfully here, but I think it's two and a half per acre currently.
Two and a half?
Two and a half, yes. Okay, I was right. I just wanted to make sure of that. Basically, 2.5 dwelling units per allowable acre allows you to possibly have smaller lot sizes than the 11,000 square feet. We've seen somewhere the lot sizes have been as much as down to about an eighth of an acre, which would be 5,000, 500 square feet. But by putting a lot size floor on this, it ensures that no lot is going to be less than 11,000 square feet in size. Still gives them a break off, still gives them a break off the area requirements, but not as, maybe not as much as they would have had otherwise.
Excuse me, Wiley. Back to the chart that shows the title wetlands. I have a question on that. That one right there.
Yeah.
In the diagram on the far right, the bottom left corner blue square, okay? Is that buildable area or not?
Thank you for bringing that up. That's one thing I forgot to say in my PowerPoint. The wetlands will remain undisturbed in their predevelopment state, and we have language in the ordinance that states that.
Okay, so is that bottom left square wetlands?
The bottom left, okay, the bottom, the bottom right square.
Yeah, right. No, 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 on, there you go.
That's out of the wetlands, and that's just, that is open space out of the wetlands.
Okay, then is that buildable, that square?
In as much as it's open space, you might put a totlot in there, but that's it.
Okay.
So basically, Wiley, that, that diagram right there, both of them represent somebody's property that they want to build on.
Yes, yeah, it's, yeah, theoretical.
Okay, I understand, good.
Wiley, I have a question. The requirement that non-title wetlands not being used as open space must remain in a predeveloped state, would they previously, you could alter the state of non-title wetlands?
Well, there are certain variances that can be made either by the Army Corps or, you know, I'm thinking of paths of walking trails, things of that nature. We want to try to eliminate that as much as we can.
Any other questions for Wiley? Wiley, thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. Appreciate your efforts.
I'll just mention one other thing real quickly with the mayor's permission.
Yes, sir.
You have the approval motion in your packet, which contains all of the changes in Article 8.1.
Very good. Thank you, Wiley. The next item on our agenda for the work session is a regional benchmark study. It's our pleasure to have with us tonight Mr. Bob Crum. He is the Director of the Hampton Roads Plan and District Commission. Welcome, Bob. Appreciate you being here. Deputy Director, Mr. Greg Grootendorst. Greg, thanks so much for coming tonight. Greg is an economist, and he happens to be the first economist that I personally met. So he has lots of expertise to share with us. And then Ms. Nikki Johnson. Nikki, welcome. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks, Mike.
Nikki is the current regional economist, and she has a presentation for us.
Yes.
So the floor is yours, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much. Yes, Nikki Johnson here. Now you know two economists. So I'm here today just to provide an overview of the latest trends in the economy over the past year, and then at the end, we'll discuss prospects for future growth for 2025. So I always like to start with the national economy, because it drives a lot of the trends, especially within our region, and it has continued to show incredible resilience over the past few years. This really can't be understated. So if we think back in 2022, the majority of economists were actually predicting a recession was looming. Yet, in 2023, we see inflation-adjusted GDP outpace the prior year's rate of growth. Now, we have seen a slowdown in 2024. You see, we went from 2.9% to 2.8. However, we're still above the average annual rate of growth that we observed in the decade prior to the pandemic. So what this is signaling is a normalization to pre-pandemic trends rather than an impending downturn. So inflation, which has been on everybody's mind for quite some time now, we know that it has moderated significantly within the first few years. So if we think back, in June of 2022, at the peak, prices were up about 9% year over year. Now, initially, we saw a significant improvement. By the end of 2023, we were around 3% inflation rate. However, we have seen that stall over the past year. So you can see by the end of 2024, we're still hovering around 3%. We know that the Federal Reserve's target is a 2% rate of inflation. Now, the latest estimates for January, you see that sharp uptick, right? That was mostly driven by food and energy. And so if we exclude those, that light blue line, you see it's a little bit more stable. However, we have seen now two year, or two straight months of rising inflation. So not only are we stalled, we are starting to see signs of an uptick. We know that a lot of that is due to, the food inflation, right, is in some part driven to, by the bird flu. We've seen the price in eggs have gone up almost 50% year over, over the past two years. And so this is continuing to be a problem. How the president's policies with immigration tariffs will affect this in the immediate term moving forward is still a question. But it is important to remember that despite the sticky inflation, we have seen at the national level, wage gains have outpaced inflation for more than about a year and a half now. And that has really helped to drive consumer spending, which has been the main driver of our economic act, of GDP growth nationally especially, but also here in the region. And so we know that this is inflation-adjusted retail sales for Hampton Roads. And so in 2024, retail sales in the region are up year over year, and we can see we're well above those pre-pandemic rates. Labor markets have also stabilized significantly over the past year. If we think back, after that initial decline during the pandemic, it took the region until mid-2023 to recover all the civilian labor force unemployment individuals that it lost out of the labor force during the pandemic. And then we saw a slowdown over that last year, which is why you see it kind of flatten. However, if you do compare the growth in 2024 to the average in the decade prior to the pandemic, we're still right above or right around that rate. And so once again, it's signaling a stabilization to those pre-pandemic trends. We see a very similar story here in the city of Pecoson, right? The city recovered all of the civilian labor force unemployment levels that it lost also early 2023, and then we've seen that stabilization over the past year. We do know that growth compared to 2019 is right in line. And so what this is signaling is a cooling of labor market conditions. We know that in this elevated interest rate environment, that firms have been more hesitant when it comes to hiring and expanding, but they are cautious when it comes to firing. And so what we're seeing at the national level is that hiring has fallen to its lowest levels since about 2013, yet layoffs have remained relatively stable. So this has had some impact on unemployment rates. We did see a slight uptick over the last year, right? We saw stronger growth nationally compared to here in the region or in the city of Pecoson. You see, Pecoson unemployment rate is below the national and the regional average, and that was true even prior to the pandemic. We're about 2.4%, still very historically low levels of unemployment. Now, if we look at job growth, we do also see a slowdown over the past year. Hampton Roads recovered all the jobs that lost during the pandemic by early 2023, I think, February. Growth over the past year is still slightly above the average annual rate of growth that we saw from 2010 to 2020. So a slowdown, but still a normalization. We're just coming off of a very hot labor market, and that's what this is really signaling. And if we compare our growth to the national average, we know even prior to the pandemic, job growth in Hampton Roads was below the national average, and that was due in some part to the federal budget sweep. We see frustration in 2013, which really slowed the recovery here in the region from the Great Recession relative to other areas. So we had slower job growth prior to the pandemic. We also saw a slower recovery here initially, in that initial aftermath. However, over the past two years, we're seeing that job growth has decelerated at a faster rate nationally than it is here in the region. And so what's positive is, we see that as of December, jobs are up 1.7% year over year relative to 1.3% for the nation. So we are seeing slightly faster job growth in Hampton Roads, which is a positive. Now, to look at where the job gains are occurring, so this is year over year, we see that the largest gains were in private education and health services, as well as construction and professional businesses. So it's always been, in some form, it's been focused in the service sector, and that is due in some part to what the trends that we saw during the pandemic of a push away from derivatives to services. Now, government jobs are up year over year, but they have yet to make a full recovery. So we're still below those 2019 levels. Leisure hospitality is up year over year, and it also did make a full recovery in 2023, which was positive. But we are seeing signs of a slowdown in the tourism industry overall. We see here, inflation-adjusted hotel revenues in the region are down, have actually fallen below those pre-pandemic levels. We think that this is due in some part to the bifurcation in hotel performance that we're seeing at the national level. So what we're seeing is that with the sticky inflation, demand for travel for low and middle-income households has slowed with inflation. However, upscale and luxury hotel markets are still seeing strong demand, which is why we're seeing slower growth here in the region relative to other areas.
What is spike?
I'm sorry. Some of that is just noise, but it's also that initial aftermath. You saw the revenge spending, right? So this is right after we opened up. The region actually benefited from drive-in travelers when you still couldn't fly or anything, but you really had that first availability to travel. You were driving to your nearest available, you know, tourism destination. And so the region actually saw much faster growth in the initial aftermath, and I think that has something to do with that, just that initial spike that you see afterwards. Defense spending in Hampton Roads increased in 2024. See, we're about $14.6 billion. That's the third straight year of rising defense spending within the region. We also outpaced our 2019 levels. How, we do know that defense spending authorized for 2025 shows an increase. There's still a lot of question there, but we know that what was authorized for 2025 does show an increase in defense spending. However, we do know that a timeline for appropriations is going to remain in question in the short term. So turning to the housing market, we saw a historic surge in home sales during the pandemic, and then in the aftermath, we saw a historic decline, right? And so we did see that in 2024, that decline did stall somewhat. So home sales last year were relatively in line with the prior year. However, we're still right around 2015 levels, so very well below that 2019 average levels that we saw right before the pandemic. Pecoson is actually somewhat of an outlier here. We've seen a sharp rebound in 2024. This is actually different from many of the localities, the regional average, and the national average. So home sales here in the city actually outpaced that pandemic surge that we saw, which is positive. It's going to help slow prices here within the region relative to other areas. But if we want to understand why home sales has slowed, we only need to look at mortgage rates, right? So during the summer of 2021, mortgage rate was around 2.5%. It's a historic low. Within about a year or so, we were near historic highs, around 7.5%. We saw it slow down slightly over the past year, but we're still at levels that we haven't seen in more than two decades, right? And this has created what's known as a locked-in effect. So we know that the majority of mortgage originations today are fixed rate, not adjustable rate mortgages. So if you bought a house at 2.5% and you now want to move, you're now facing a 7% mortgage. And so that's really slowed home sales. A lot of people are kind of waiting and hoping that mortgage rates come down before they move. So that's really had an effect on existing home sales, but at the same time, we know that new construction is not near levels that it should be. So these are building permits, right, for all home types. We see that even prior to the pandemic, we were nowhere near levels that we saw prior to the Great Recession. So new construction home sales, or new construction of homes within the region were significantly depressed prior to the pandemic. This is not just the region, this is also a national trend. And then we have seen a further slowdown over the past year. So we know that in this elevated interest rate environment with inflation, higher construction costs, that's further put a strain on new construction here within the region. But if we want to understand how that's affected supply, we can see here, this is the month's supply of homes for sale. So what this is saying is, at the current pace of sales, how long would it take to sell off all of your existing inventory? So during the height of that pandemic surge, we see we fell to a historic low of one month. And now, we're about 2.2 months, but we're still below the levels that we saw prior to the pandemic. So right before the pandemic, we're about 2.9 months. So this is really, we see that inventories have not reached pre-pandemic levels yet, and so this has really put a constraint on supply overall. And so if we want to understand why housing prices have increased so much over the past few years, we know that inventories are not meeting demand. So we see here, the typical value of a home since right before the pandemic, February 2020 to December 2024, we see the typical value of a home is about, up about 45.1% in the nation, slightly lower in the U.S., about 42%. The city of Pecoson is about 35.7%. In the city of Pecosin, it's about 35.7%. So this is historic growth. We are also seeing somewhat faster growth within the region relative to the nation over the past year. So you can see just in the last year, it's up about six percentage or four percentage points nationally relative to the region, and the city were about six percentage points. There's a lot of factors that go into this. I know that you've seen a faster rebound, but you're probably not seeing the full effect on housing prices yet. So I guess in 2025, you'd probably see slower growth relative to the region because you have seen a stronger bounce back in your home sales. We know that while home, the typical value of a home has grown slower in the region relative to the nation, that's not true for rents. Rents are rising faster here relative to the nation. This is the same, so this is comparing January 2020 to December of last year. So the typical rent price is up 47% in the region relative to 39.4%. We know that this has really also put a constraint on housing affordability. The latest estimates that we have for housing cost burden, so that measures what percentage of households are spending 30% or more of their income on housing. And that means you're considered cost burden. So our share of cost-burden households increased in 2023, and we know that the large part of that was driven by renters, right? And so renters are continuing to see that strain. We know that in this higher interest rate environment and with higher construction costs, we're going to continue to see that strain in the near term. Now, I usually provide an actual forecast with numbers, but given current conditions, I don't find that very valuable at the moment. Uncertainty, clouds, forecasts, there's a lot of uncertainty moving forward. And so overall, what we can say is that the fundamentals of our economy, both regionally and nationally, are strong. We see strong fundamentals, but there is a lot of elevated uncertainty moving forward. So how is defense spending going to change, or will there be any changes in defense spending? If it remains unchanged, we do see that it will continue to provide a boost for the regional economy in 2025. We know that with inflation ticking up, labor markets stabilize. The Fed reiterated about two weeks ago that he sees no need to do further cuts in interest rates right now. So we are most likely facing a higher interest rate environment in the short term. We know that unless we significantly increase inventories in this higher interest rate environment, we're going to continue to see the housing pressures that we have, it's going to continue to exacerbate the housing affordability crisis within the short term. A lot of uncertainty on the federal level. We understand that we have a relatively higher share of federal workers relative to other areas. How that will impact us is still a lot in question. There's a lot that we don't know, but overall, strong fundamentals moving forward, very little certainty also moving forward. Questions?
Nikki, thank you very much. This is the second presentation that I've seen you give. The first one was great, this one was even better. And part of what we're trying to do this year is educate the public on where we stand financially, how we fit into the greater Hampton Roads region. We had a presentation at our last meeting from Michael Evans at the Hampton Roads Alliance, and your presentation tonight was intended to build on what Michael shared with us. So we've accomplished that goal. I know y'all have come a long way and had to deal with adverse traffic conditions. So Bob, Greg, Nikki, thank you so much for being here and your contributions to our work sessions.
Absolutely. And I'm going to now have my deputy director, Gregory North, come up and tell you about the PDC.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wheeler, members of council. I did ask Mr. Wheeler if we could add just a few slides to talk a little bit about the PDC and TPO. One of the things, I guess, we do a very bad job but telling people what a planning district commission is. It's a horrible name. But one of the things that we recognize is, you know, we look nationally, internationally, we really compete on a regional basis for jobs, for labor force. The economy is really a regional thing. So when regions do well, the localities do well. When regions don't do well, localities suffer. And back in the late '60s, the Commonwealth of Virginia realized that, you know, we don't, Virginia's a little bit strange. Cities and counties are autonomous, and we don't really have a natural way for regions to kind of coalesce and collaborate. And so they put in place Planning District Commission. So in 1969, there were 22 planning districts created. There are now 21 because the South Side Planning District Commission joined with the Peninsula Planning District Commission. So this is the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the 17 localities that comprise our organization. And while planning district commissions across the Commonwealth do very different things, what the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, your Planning District Commission does is we do a whole lot of stuff, and we try to kind of put it in these six categories. We, our focus really is collaboration. Collaboration, cooperation, we facilitate a lot of meetings, almost 300 meetings a year facilitated in our building. So a lot of this is working through locality staff. A lot of these connections are just going out to the region, the community, and connecting localities with resources and bringing them together, sharing best practices. But we do this at all levels throughout the region. We have emergency management coordination, things like interoperable communications and making sure that we can all talk to each other and coordinate in that essence. Environmental education, where we try to speak with one voice where it's convenient so that makes things easier for people who, in Hampton Roads, 50% of the people that go to work get up in the morning and they go to a different jurisdiction. So communicating with one voice on things like environmental education is not only more cost-effective, it's more appropriate because then people hear the same message, you know, if they're in Pecosin or New York County or Newport News or Virginia Beach. Housing and Human Services, we do offer services there, first-time homebuyers assistance to get people into housing, and we coordinate a lot in the region through the Human Services component. Planning and Economics, which Nikki's a part of, this is very broad-based. We do a lot in that field. Anything that's housing or, sorry, anything that's planning-related, I mean, anything, anything related, kind of falls into this department. But we do a lot of forecasting and updating and providing trends, letting people know what's going on with the region. We house a lot of data and information. And then Water Resources, which stretches a pretty significant gamut. We're, we're up in DC sometimes, we're spending a lot of times in Richmond, but one of the things we do really well there is wastewater, drinking water, stormwater, you name it. We want to speak for the region, and we have actually quite a powerful voice up in Richmond and even in DC where we can speak and say, this is what's going to benefit our region, this is what's going to help our region, or we can even push back and say, you're imposing restrictions that don't make a whole lot of sense and can be very costly when we do that with one strong voice, we can be pretty effective. And then we have Diversity Equity Inclusion Title VI and Civil Rights, which goes through all our programs. And so that's just one of the things that we try to do to make sure that we're reaching everybody in the community in the best way that we can. And Bob's going to speak. Bob's, obviously, he's got the PDC and the TPO here, but he's going to speak to the TPO part.
So thank you, Greg, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wheeler, and city council members. I'm your executive director, as Greg mentioned, for both the Planning District Commission and the Transportation Planning Organization. So you heard from Greg a little bit about the Planning District Commission. I'd like to talk with you about the transportation side of our organization. So each metropolitan region across the country has a designated federal transportation planning organization. We are that federally designated transportation planning organization for the Hampton Roads region. So what does that mean? It is our job, working with the elected officials from the 17 local governments, working with state and federal partners, to identify your regional transportation needs and prioritize those needs. No federal money, no state money, no regional money can be allocated to a transportation project in Hampton Roads without our Transportation Planning Organization or TPO Board approving that expenditure of funds. So that's why the work of your staff, not only at the PDC that Greg mentioned, but at the TPO Board, is so critical, and the work of your city manager and your mayor and your representatives on our boards and commissions. We begin our process on the transportation side of the House by looking at a long-range transportation plan. And we are currently updating that long-range transportation plan, where we look out 25, 30, 40 years and say, what are our transportation needs? And how much money do we have to spend within that timeframe to move transportation projects? So receiving input from councils such as yours, receiving input from your staff on what those needs are, are critically, critically important, and your staff has provided some great input to us that we're using to update the long-range transportation plan. After we get the plan approved, we have something called the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is our federal, is our dollars, our checkbook, if you will, that we program money to, to apply to these projects. And then there's a number of things that we have to do to comply with federal requirements, measuring and monitoring the performance of our regional transportation system, et cetera. But your input into this process is critical. So really, if you ever have any ideas for what transportation needs might be for your city, please don't hesitate to send that information our way directly to me or through your representatives on our board. We wanted to provide this information for you and your residents. There's a number of ways that you can follow our work. We have a pretty strong social media presence. Please feel free to follow us. We encourage you to follow us on Facebook at both the TPO and the PDC. That's where we really try to do a good job of keeping everybody up to date on the various regional initiatives that we have. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to conclude today by really maybe bringing this down quickly and talk with you about three projects of interest at the regional level.
Yes, sir.
And how they could benefit your city. So I'm going to start with regional legislative affairs. And if I may, sir, we could pull out the regional legislative agenda and hand that around, should be plenty of copies for the council and even copies left over for the audience. So one of the things that we do at the Planning District Commission, one thing we didn't mention is Greg, Nikki, and I have over 100 bosses. We have one board of 47 members, another board sitting at about 45. We run up to 100. But that's where, that's where the regional collaboration happens, in our board meeting room. And one of the things we're really proud of is that those officials representing 17 local governments come together every year and they approve this regional legislative agenda. This regional legislative agenda, as you can imagine, anything we can do regionally, we're in that space, A to Z. And this regional legislative agenda that deals with things like transportation, deals with things like water resources or renewable energy or biking and walking trails, et cetera, things that we came together unanimously asked our General Assembly and our federal delegation to help us with. It's a good reflection of just the scope of issues and topics that we deal with. I'll mention a couple of things that have come out of our regional legislative agenda over the last couple of years. The funding of the Interstate 64 gap between Hampton Roads and Richmond was a really significant item that we advocated for as a region. That's one of the things that came out of our regional legislative agenda. A couple of years ago, we were asked to advocate for K-12 public education funding at the state level, where we collaborated with Northern Virginia and the Greater Richmond Region to make a strong voice. We've had influence there. As Greg's mentioned, we've had influence around water policy issues. So we really can speak more strongly when we speak with one voice. So wanted to provide everybody a little bit of information on that regional legislative agenda. A second item, and Greg, if we could hand around those maps that I'd like to talk with you about, is an incredible opportunity for a walking, a walking and biking trail on the peninsula of Hampton Roads. And I see you're opened up to it already there. So how many of you have been on the Virginia Capitol Trail? Okay? A 52-mile walking and biking trail that starts in downtown Richmond, winds its way through Verina, goes down through Charles City County, down Route 5, and comes right down to the doorstep of Williamsburg by Jamestown, okay? Our proposal is to take that trail, and we want to extend it the whole way to Fort Monroe on the peninsula. And yes, you'll see a connector to your city off of it. What this would do is we are going to create over 100 miles of continuous walking and biking trail that someday, hopefully soon, will allow you to bike or walk from downtown Richmond the whole way to Fort Monroe, the whole way to Pecosin, right? Now, what I'm very excited about, and we also have a leg of this that goes over the ferry in Surrey, goes down through Isle of Wight County, the Suffolk, and takes the railroad right away the whole way to the Virginia Beach Ocean Front, okay? 17 localities unanimously behind this. I show you the alignment on that map, and what I don't show you there is just how many segments have been funded. We are getting funding segment by segment for this trail. In the last year or so, we brought over $15 million to the walking and biking trail, and we're continuing to build out sections as we go. So really, really exciting opportunity for us. And, you know, if you think about coming down Route 5, there's, if you're biking or walking, there is not a whole lot of area to leave money, is there? It's pretty rural. That changes when you get to Hampton Roads, right? So we think that not only is this an active recreation opportunity, but can be an economic driver. And when you really stop and think about it, where can you go in the Mid-Atlantic region and walk and bike 100 continuous miles, right? It's a huge, huge opportunity for us that we're really excited about. And then the third one, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to mention quickly. How many of you are aware of these subsea internet cables that have come ashore in Virginia Beach? These are transatlantic, Mr. Wheeler's heard me talk about this way too many times, but transatlantic cables that bring the fastest internet service on the East Coast to the Hampton Roads region. We have three of them here, more are coming. We have, we are constructing a fiber ring on the south side that connects to those cables and creates a ring on the south side. Friday, I have a meeting with Hampton and Newport News, and we have a cost proposal and a design approach to bring that through the tunnels and bring it over to the peninsula. And then after we can work that through with Hampton and Newport News, it'll be time for me to be working with Mr. Wheeler and others to, Mr. Bellamy, et cetera, in terms of how we work on plans to extend to the entire peninsula area. For people that know way more about internet than me, I'm not a technical guy, I'm not an economist, sir, so I'm one of those people that are, I'm a planner. But when the experts look globally and they identify the 10 global internet hubs in the world, and they talk about the next five, they are saying Hampton Roads can be one of those next five because of these subsea cables. And if we can connect to them, not only can we bring more competition in the open market to our region for internet service providers, which brings down costs for your residents, but we can provide the fastest speeds and really start to stimulate more economic development opportunity around companies that might be looking for those speeds. So it's an incredible opportunity for us that I look forward to discussing more with you. Sir, I will stop there on behalf of myself and Nikki and Greg. Just thank you for having us, and we look forward to any questions you might have for the three of us.
Any questions from the council?
Do you? Oh, yeah. Thank you. For the trails that you do have, are those dedicated multi-use paths, or are they, there could be a bike lane on an existing highway?
Where we can, our first priority is going to be dedicated, separated pathways, much like the experience you see with the current Virginia Capitol Trail. Now, as you're aware, the difference of our region is we've got to weave through the city of Williamsburg. We've got to figure out how to get through some urban areas and more dense areas. So there could be places where cycle tracks and other things are going to be necessary, but our first priority is going to be that separated space.
And the funding for that, I know in your pamphlet, it says we request funding at the state level. Is that where you're requesting the funding?
So we have a number of things at play. We've been able to bring the different, and I have a map that I could share with you that shows the status of each segments, what is funded and what isn't. We brought state smart-scale money to the project for certain segments, Transportation Alternative Program money to different segments, there's some carbon reduction money there. We've made We've made some ask of the federal government, and some of our cities have even started building it into their capital improvement programs and working and cooperating with developers as we continue to build this through. So it's going to be a combination of all those sources.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
I just have a general comment. I'll compliment you on the quality of your slides. A lot of things that we see, you try to put way too many words, all run together. And y'all's slides, I thought, were just wonderful. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you for the call, but Nikki does a, does a great job of, every time she tells her story, I learn something new from it, so. But we appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
Randy, Joe Condon?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to note that the last map that Mr. Crum passed around, obviously, we didn't have an opportunity to protect it on the screen. We will post a link to it on our website for anyone that would like to see it. And there's a lot of great stuff on both the PDC and TPO website. Anything you've heard about today that you'd like to know more about, they have more on their website, you can probably, but it's all good stuff. So anyway, I just wanted to point out that we'll be posting the map.
Thank you, Randy.
Bob, I did have one additional question for you.
Yes, sir.
And you've done a great job at anticipating the questions that I had, so thank you for that. I think a great example of the positive effects of regional collaboration is the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel Expansion Project. Would you mind speaking about that a little bit, please?
Sure. So one of the opportunities that we had, so you all have been in Hampton Roads much longer than I have, you've known what the transportation challenges have been, the problem was we never had the money to fix those challenges. That all changed in 2013. In 2013, the Virginia General Assembly, and as you know, we're a Dillon rural state, they gave the Hampton Roads region the ability to enact an extra sales and use tax in Hampton Roads and an extra gasoline tax in Hampton Roads. Collectively today, that generates about $240 million annually that is put into a pot of money that's managed by the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission. It's a group called HR TAC. These transportation projects that you're seeing happen around this region are unlike any place else in the Commonwealth and unlike most places in the country because they're not funded with federal money. They are your local tax dollars at work. So when you think about the first three phases of I-64 widening, that was your regional money. When you think about the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel and the improvement of the 26 bridges on either side, that's your regional money from settlers the whole way to 564. The complete reconstruction of the 264-64 interchange and the complete reconstruction of the high-rise bridge and 64 South Side from Greenbrier to Bowers Hill, all has been done regionally by the local elected officials pertaining to the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. It was October 2016 that this region, in our boardroom, sat down and the elected officials prioritized that as a project and allowed that project to move forward. So what you're seeing with that directionally bored tunnel, the third in the country, is not only a magnificent example of engineering, an engineering marvel that they're able to do that type of work, but really is a national model for how metropolitan regions come together and meet their needs. It really, really is an incredible story. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for sharing your insight, Bob, and it just further underscores the importance of the regional collaboration. And even though we, as Pecosin, are a very small city, somewhat isolated on a peninsula, only two ways in and two ways out, we still play a major part in the big picture in this region, and we can work together with our partners on equal terms as we help support these projects. So thank you for illuminating that for us.
Mr. Mayor, could I add one more thing?
Yes, sir, please do.
Comment, it made me think of it. Being a community with only two ways in and two ways out, that's on a good weather day. And Bob and his team were instrumental in helping us in our efforts with Hampton and VDOT to secure the $78.5 million, which is the project that is the new bridge to Hampton and all the things that come with it. It was facilitated by Bob's folks, staffed by Bob's folks at the planning level, and without them, we would not have been successful.
Thank you, Randy. And just to reemphasize, the 64 widening project that Bob spoke about, the new bridge, the new causeway coming into Pecosin from Hampton, as well as the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel project, would not have happened without the HR PDC and the HR TPO and the other regional organizations. So that's how critical, critically important they are, and just how important it is for we, as Pecosin, to support the regional efforts and play a part in that. So Bob, thank you so much for sharing all this with us. Greg, Nikki, the presentation is excellent, very insightful to us as the elected body, but also to our citizens watching from home.
Very good.
So thank you very much, and look forward to continued relationships with y'all.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions or comments from council members?
That was great.
Very well, thank you very much. We will conclude the work session, and we'll start our regular session in about five minutes.
Good evening and welcome to all. This meeting of Pecosin City Council is called to order. If y'all will join me, please, as I lead the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this day and the opportunity to be together as we serve those who elected us to serve and make decisions on their behalf. Please bless us with your wisdom, lead us, guide us, and direct us as we make decisions to impact the lives of those that we care so much about. Servant leaders, Lord Jesus, please help us to do our part to preserve, protect, and defend, and at the local level, our beloved Constitution and the states of America that was written with divine promise. By Christ's name we pray. Amen. Next item on the agenda is the audience for visitors. So if we have any speakers tonight that would like to speak with us about topics unrelated to the items described below that we'll address in the public hearing. So the floor is now open. Seeing no speakers, we will close the floor, and we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the regular session of February 10th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Christie, we call for a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bunty? Aye. Councilman Fife?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hover?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of 7-0.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. We have five items on the agenda tonight. The first item is an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds. Randy, do you have a presentation for us?
I do not. Kyle's going to present, right?
Very good. We have with us tonight Mr. Kyle Laux and Mr. Austin Sachs from our financial advisor, Davenport Company. So Kyle, Austin, thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Looking forward to presentation, so the floor is yours.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, always nice to see everyone. You'll recall almost exactly a month ago, we were here talking about a plan to go competitively bid $3 million per your adopted capital improvement program to local, regional, national banks and work our way through that process, as you've done so often successfully in the past, using your excellent credit ratings as sort of the backstop for making the banks understand that clearly Pecosin is in very good financial shape. You've done all your planning to do those various things. So we've gone through that process, and we have the results. I will, totally steal Austin's thunder, he's going to kind of walk you through the couple pages here, but we've got very good competitive bids, a local bank that appears to us at least to be the best of those bids, and those interest rates are better than what was planned. Very clean bid with a lot of prepayment flexibility that all works within your budget and works within all the planning that was done. That, I'll turn it over to Austin to walk you through it, but certainly happy to answer your questions after Austin's done. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Appreciate the introduction from Kyle, but my name's Austin Sachs. Let's see here. Oh. Well, do y'all have handouts that you can follow along with? Perfect. Well, in terms of background, I think Kyle covered a handful of those points. I think, like he said, $3 million, up to $3 million borrowing for planned HVAC projects at Pecosin High School. And as well, this bond issue has been planned for within the FY '25 Capital Improvement Program. Moving to the next slide, just some additional background in terms of, we're here roughly a month ago, provided that plan of finance, and then sent out an RFP to local, regional, and national banks, and got those proposals back approximately 10 days ago on Valentine's Day. So. Moving another slide forward, just a sense of interest rates. Went through this graphic last time we were here, but interest rates are favorable, they're still very competitive on a tax-exempt, long-term basis. So still highly favorable. Jumping to page five, just some goals and objectives when we're looking and evaluating these proposals. Definitely want to limit the budget impact, want to work within the planning that's already been put in place. Want to secure the most favorable interest rate, which a lot of that hard work has been actually taken care of by y'all in terms of your very strong credit ratings and your very high financial standing. In terms, we're looking for a fixed interest rate, so we're looking over a 15-year time period, we're looking at, looking for an interest rate that is fixed for that entire time period. And then lastly, with this direct bank loan process, we want to maintain flexibility. So if there's ever an opportunity to refinance for savings in the future, or if there's a potential need or want to restructure this loan, we want to maintain that flexibility into the future. Jumping to slide six for some high-level results. So the city received six proposals. We've got those banks listed out. I will point out that there has been some combining of banks, so you've got your JP Morgan Chase, JP Morgan Chase, Truist is formerly SunTrust, BB&amp;T, and Webster Bank is, also includes Sterling Bank, if you've ever heard of that. So you could also think of this as potentially nine proposals. So a nice smattering of banks, not a technical term, but you've got your local banks, regional, and your more national folks. You can see that in the green box there, we've got Town highlighted. That will be our recommendation. They've provided the lowest fixed interest rate and the most flexible prepayment They've provided the lowest fixed interest rate and the most flexible prepayment provisions. On to slide seven, give you some of the numbers to support that. So on this table, we've got ranked in terms of interest rate for the 15 years. At the top there at Town Bank at a 4.27% interest rate, fixed for the full 15-year term. And the key part that we really like is the prepayment provision. So it says anytime, no penalty. And so what that really means is you have the flexibility or at any time that you can prepay a part of the loan, repay the whole loan, which gives you, from our perspective, the ultimate prepayment flexibility for refinancing or restructuring purposes. You can see interest rates in and around the 450 up to 479 with Huntington, but Town Bank coming in at 427, well below the 5% planning interest rate that we used. Jump into slide eight. In terms of our rationale for the recommendation, I think we covered Town provided the most favorable interest rate. We do have one footnote there in terms of this concept called bank-qualified obligation. It's really a part of the tax code that allows banks an additional benefit for lending to what they call small issuers. And so for that bank qualification, it's for issuers that plan to issue less than $10 million in a calendar year. And so at that $3 million mark that we're talking about today, there's still potentially $7 million of additional flexibility to maintain that bank-qualified eligibility. So there's some good flexibility and contingency there. At the fixed interest rate for the full 15 years, we've got that ultimate prepayment flexibility. And in terms of the last bullet there, credit approval. So we've actually talked with Town and they have indicated that this loan's received full final credit approval, so no more info, audits, budgets, no more due diligence is necessary from the bank's perspective. Just to give you a sense of those payments and how they layer into your existing tax-supported debt profile. So focus on the graph on the right and our dark green bars there, we've got our existing debt service. And then the light green bars, we've got the estimated payments for that Town Bank loan. You can see approximate, well, no payments in FY25, so through June 30 of this calendar year. And then we'll have interest, an interest payment in FY2026. And then when the loan fully starts to amortize our principal and interest payments, we're looking at about a $275,000 annual payment. And so you can see how that fits into the existing debt profile. So we've got basically 26, 27, and 28 to really get through before we've got that really nice debt service decline where you can put those payments into the budget without having to increase any dollars. On our last page here, just a schedule and next steps. So we're here this evening presenting the results of the RFP process, Town Bank being our recommended lender. Y'all will hold a public hearing and then your bond counsel, Sands Anderson, who a couple representatives are here this evening, have prepared an ordinance that will approve Town Bank as the lender. And that will come before y'all for your decision. And then assuming that is approved at your discretion, we'll work with city staff and bond counsel over the balance of this month, early part of next month, for closing about two and a half weeks from now on March 12th. And so with that, happy to answer any more questions. If not, appreciate the opportunity to present in front of y'all tonight.
Thank you very much, Austin. Appreciate the presentation tonight. Kyle as well. Any questions from council?
Very good. Being a public hearing, we'll open the floor for comments from the public, if there are any regarding this matter. Seeing none, we'll close the floor and I will request a motion for the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the sale of general obligation bonds.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Christie, call for vote, please.
Councilman Fy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting? Aye. Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Abstained.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six zero, one abstention.
Thank you, Christie. Moving on to item two, ordinance approving amendments to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance, Appendix A zoning of the City Pecoson Code of Ordinances. Head back with us tonight, Mr. Wiley Horton, our Director of Community Development. So Wiley, the floor is yours, my friend.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The city council had an opportunity during the work session to take a look at the changes in the ordinance. I can go into as little or as much detail as the council pleases at this point. I'll start off with a summation. Basically, what we're doing here is we are setting the size of lots at 11,000 square feet with area that does not require any board of zoning appeals approval, whether it's variance or whether it's in the seaward 50 feet or not. We're setting setbacks of 15 feet instead of the current 10. Building setback lines are set at 35 instead of 30. And 50% of non-titled wetlands are, can be included in open space as opposed to the current 100%. The remainder of the wetlands that's not in open space shall remain in a predevelopment state. Requirement for home design and assessment information if deemed necessary by the zoning administrator. And that's drawings that we'd have submitted to ensure that the housing types are compatible with the neighborhood. We did go over a, well, I'm in the wrong PowerPoint. Sorry about that. Well, I don't see the PowerPoint that I need, so that's okay. I don't know what happened to it. But I can, I can go over the PowerPoint if it is the council's pleasure. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Horton, is, are you referring to the same PowerPoint that you went through during your work session?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have closed that down.
All right. We'll work towards that.
I would, I would note for the public, council certainly understands this, you sat through the work session, but the purpose of these changes is to further refine this ordinance. Each time one of these developments comes forward, we learn something. And sometimes we learn something which necessitates a revision or refinement to the ordinance to try to better ensure conformity with surrounding larger neighborhood that is a part.
Horton said the move towards a minimum lots size is a proposed change because the curve in ordinance actually doesn't have a minimum.
It does not. It has a density requirement, 2.5 per acre, which can result in some rather small lots as well as larger lots. And so that's one reason we put the floor at 11,000 square feet, which is a quarter of an acre. And it's still a benefit over what conventional subdivision lots size could be, whether it's 18,000 or two. 20,000 or one, or 26,700 square feet in RS.
Wiley?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your efforts with the presentation, but since we've already been through this during the work session, I think we'll just go ahead and open the floor to, to public comment. If we have any. Seeing none, do any council members have questions or comments for Wiley? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry about technical difficulties there.
No problem, Wiley. Appreciate you being with us and appreciate your presentation. That being said, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that council approve amendments to Article 8.1 of the zoning ordinance, Appendix A zoning of the City of Pecoson Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Very well. Christie?
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Fy?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you, Christie. Item three under public hearing, we have a resolution to approve an ordinance to adopt Appendix E for short-term rentals in the City of Pecoson Code of Ordinances. We have our principal planner, Mr. Thomas Canelo, to speak with us tonight. So Thomas, thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of council. This is a, an ordinance that you are no stranger to. It's been a pleasure to work on this with you and the Planning Commission and at the staff level for the last 18 months or more. But what you have in front of you is the framework for our ordinance to regulate short-term rentals. It's, it's almost in the exact form you remanded it back to the Planning Commission with Councilwoman Bunting's amendments. It was recommended for approval unanimously by the Planning Commission. I did make some, some changes, non-substantive in how it will be regulated, but just more housekeeping and reflects more accurately the process that we will go through with the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office and just highlighted the proper names of the licenses we will issue in accordance with the code. With your approval tonight, we will work with the Commissioner. We will send joint letters to those persons operating short-term rentals that we can identify. And those persons will have 90 days to either apply or cease and desist, depending on what their situation is. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any idea even approximation of how many that might be?
About, about half a dozen. I previously identified all that were active and have current addresses and owners. So unless any of that information has changed, and sometimes there are new ones that pop up almost weekly or bi-weekly, but we will work fast this week to identify those persons and get the appropriate communication to them.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Seeing none, we will close the floor for that item. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve the ordinance to adopt Appendix E short-term rentals to the City of Pecoson Code.
Dragan.
Thank you. Christie?
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you, Christie. Item four, an ordinance to amend Chapter 6, advertising of the City of Pecoson Code of Ordinances. And we have Mr. Canelo back for this presentation as well. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this revision, I'll say, to the current Chapter 6 of the city code would, would essentially restrict the signs that are eligible for placement in the city right-of-way. Currently, signs permitted to be posted in the city right-of-way include those signs such as political or special events, not commercial in nature. The expanded calendar for elections has really, I will say, it's grown legs on, on campaign signs specifically. They can be placed in the right-of-way in some years for more than 120 days, but beyond those, signs of the right-of-way have become unsightly. It's a regulatory burden on staff as well as an enforcement burden and also poses a real maintenance, I'll say, headache for both our Public Works employees and those we contract to maintain the right-of-way. And the language presented to you would restrict those signs in the right-of-way only to those subdivision identification signs, signs erected by the local government and approved by the city manager and signs erected for the purpose of emergency communication. That's it in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions or expand as you see fit.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Thomas. Over the weekend, I was looking to see if there were any other municipalities in the region that currently allow signs in the right-of-way. I was not able to find anything. Have you found any other municipalities in the region that even allow them currently in the right-of-way?
I won't pretend to be an expert in our neighbors' policies, but I will tell you that I think ours is very loose compared to most in the region and probably in the Commonwealth. A lot of localities, when they take signs down, they follow those up with civil penalties, monetary penalties for those being posted. So our code is very expansive how it currently exists, but we are, with, with the language in front of you, attempting to rein that in so that there are no temporary signs posted in the right-of-way. This is not an attempt at all to discourage or regulate campaign signs or philanthropic signs in someone's private property, but it will restrict those from being placed in the public right-of-way.
Councilwoman Emmett? Thank you very much for your very insightful question. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a few questions.
Yes, sir. Please do. Councilman Fy?
Has, has there been a problem other than the sightliness? I mean, if it was just a beautification measure, I'm all for getting rid of them, but has there been any traffic problems that's cited in there as being a distractor for drivers? And it is.
I would certainly tell you, and we try to stay on top of this as best we can, so those that are distracting, we remove swiftly, whether it's the staff in our department or the staff in Public Works. But you have seen oftentimes spring, summer, fall, those big, beautiful, orange and yellow, you know, poster boards that people will often nail to telephone poles or trees and certainly are a distraction. And we have gotten calls about them being distracting.
Yeah. So just to be clear, this would, right now, just coming down here this evening, so Boy Scouts is advertising for dinner on the 8th of March. Plug there. Also, sign up for Kiwanis. They're having their thing also. I think it's on the 8th of March. So those would be not allowed either, right?
That's correct.
And so, and what do we consider the city's right-of-way?
It's all of that portion of the right-of-way. I mean, it obviously depends on the street. You know, some of our streets are 30-foot right-of-ways, some are 50, some are greater. But really, any portion thereof or any property we own is what this specific section of the code applies to. Like I said, this is not prohibiting any of those signs from being placed on private property.
Like you go down with Creek toward my house or going toward Hampton, you know, it's pretty easy to tell between the sidewalk and the street, there's a little area there that's obviously right-of-way. When you get down farther until we get the bridge built, is, is that area down there also part of the city's right-of-way?
All, those portions of the city are part of the right-of-way, obviously not as easily identifiable as some portions that have sidewalk, but we can usually ascertain, we usually have a pretty good idea of where the public right-of-way extends, whether it's using our GIS system or we have in the past pulled plats to interpret the right-of-way to determine if signs are in it or not. But you all are very aware of the size of some of the, I'll say, political campaign size signs. And it doesn't take much room at all for those to be placed in, in the right-of-way, especially if they're turned parallel about the width of the stake, probably a sixteenth of an inch is about all they need. But if there is a question whether it's public right-of-way or not, we, we do a little homework to make sure it is.
Yeah, the only one I can think of that would be kind of an issue, we do put up ones for the seafood festival, like on phone poles and stuff like that. I'm assuming that.
That would be, that would be, continue to be permitted as a sign erected by the government, the local government and approved by the city. government, the local government, and approved by the city manager.
Okay. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you, Keith. Appreciate that. Good questions. Thomas, in light of that, could you speak a bit about the opportunities for advertising that we offer on our city electronic sign?
Sure. I'm, I'm not an expert in that service. I think it's certainly more geared to the EDA, so I can't expand on that greatly, but we're not limiting anybody's ability to advertise for their commercial business on their commercial property. No commercial property is permitted to advertise currently in the right-of-way. Those are the signs we see often, but they're erected illegally each time. But this would not change one's ability to advertise on, on property they own.
Mr. Canelo, the, the thrust of the question, the electronic sign on, on Victor Boulevard. We do allow, as council is aware, certain events and things to be advertised on our sign, just as we do, we're watching behind you, Mr. Canelo, our public access channel and our community access, access portion. And we do have a number of things that we do put on that sign to support civic groups and things like that, and I anticipate that would continue. So, anyone who get that part of the question answered?
Thank you, Randy. I appreciate it. Any other questions or comments for Thomas? Well done, Thomas. We certainly appreciate your efforts. Well done, my friend. With that, I'll open the floor for public comment on this topic. Seeing no speakers, we'll close the floor, and I'll ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I propose an ordinance to amend Chapter six, advertising of the City of Pecosin Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Thank you. Christie?
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
All right, thank you very much. Item five, under the public hearing, is a resolution to authorize a city manager to enter into an agreement with York County to adjust and relocate the common boundary line between the two jurisdictions. And with that, we have Thomas back with us again for another presentation. So, Thomas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of you will remember this from last year, just over a year ago. In January of two thousand twenty-four, City Council approved the resolution to authorize the city manager to enter an agreement with York County to adjust the boundary line we share with them. The boundary line we share with York County has been largely misunderstood, I'll say, since it was drawn, but through a lot of work with our friends in York County and some, some folks in the private sector, we've worked very hard in fixing that. There is part of the code that requires a petition to the court to be filed to reflect the survey and the agreement the manager makes. There was a clerical error made, and then there's another part of the code that requires us to do this in an orderly time or a short amount of time, and with the advice of York County's council and ours, we thought it was proper to bring this back before you. It's the resolution you all saw last year and approved, and York County's Board of Supervisor saw it last Monday and approved it unanimously, and it's before you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Thomas. Any questions or comments?
This supersedes and updates what we did last year.
I would say re-ups what you did last year. The agreement is essentially the same, and the survey that was professionally prepared is the same, and with your approval tonight, we'll go back with the petition to the court and officially move this again.
Any other questions or comments from Council? All right, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment on this topic. Seeing none, we'll close the floor, and I'll ask for a motion.
Waiting on a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that part. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with York County to adjust and relocate the common boundary line between the two jurisdictions in order to eliminate uncertainty as to the physical location of the boundary and confusion regarding in which locality certain property lies as specified in Virginia Code fifteen point two dash three one zero six, and to petition the court, the Circuit Court, for the County of York, City of Pecosin, for approval of the change pursuant to Virginia Code fifteen point two dash three one zero seven.
Suck.
Thank you.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
The motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you very much. So that concludes the public hearing. We'll move into new business, item F. Item one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a grant support letter for Verizon Virginia LLC and Verizon South Incorporated. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this item was, comes to you at the request of Verizon. What they're asking you to consider authorizing the mayor to sign it on your behalf is a grant application of theirs to the state of Virginia for additional money, which requires no local match or commitment from us, which would allow them, if approved, to expand, to further extend, and in our city, that's not much, but to expect, to improve internet service within our, within our city. It's a non-competitive grant, meaning had, had our other cable provider also requested this, you certainly could do that. There is no inherent conflict between the two. There is no financial requirement, and if we're to provide this, it provides them ten points on the rating scale that they otherwise might not get. And given the relatively late interval of this request, I'm guessing that if they followed suit in other communities, a lot of them couldn't have accommodated it, so maybe we help our community get a little bit-
Thank you, Randy. Any questions or comments from Council members?
Yes, I got some. When you say our community, you're talking about the greater community, you're talking about Pecosin?
City of Pecosin, sir.
I, you know, I was talking with Christie today, having dug into this a little bit, came across a website, broadbandmap.fcc.gov, and it shows that we basically have a hundred percent of broadband accessibility. Clearly, the people have it, but there, it's, it's available everywhere in the City of Pecosin. I'm trying to see how this benefits us, you know, if it helps the greater community, I have no problem with it, but-
I can't speak for Verizon. I'm aware, and quite, I think we can be quite proud as a community, that we have, in the documents I've seen, the highest amount of broadband availability of any community in Virginia, but it's not quite a hundred percent, and it can always be improved. That's the best answer I can give you. If, for any reason you were uncomfortable passing this this evening, then certainly take it off the agenda, but their deadline is March first, so.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Keith. Any other questions or comments? That being said, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a grant support letter for Verizon Virginia LLC and Verizon South Incorporated.
Second.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fie? Councilman Southall? Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six one.
Thank you, Christie. Item two, under new business, we have a resolution making an appointment to the Wetlands Board. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Wetlands Boards with the following names inserted. Paul W. Michael Jr., the term will expire January thirty-first, two thousand and thirty. An alternate with the name of Ned Mader, and the term would expire January thirty-first, two thousand and thirty.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Christie?
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you. Item three, under new business, a resolution making an appointment to the York Pecosin Social Services Board. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the York Pecosin Social Services Advisory Board. The current advisory board member had served their term, they were not available to be, to be considered for reappointments. I would like to insert the name of Donna Jackson with a term that would expire January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Very well, Christie?
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you, Christie. Item four, resolution making nominations for appointment to the Board of Equalization. Do we have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move the Council approve resolution making nominations for the appointment to the Board of Equalization for the City of Pecosin with the following names, Maria Oakley, Cecil Miller, Casey Stratton, and Jean Effort.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Christie?
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven-
Thank you, Christie. Item five, we have a resolution declaring a state of emergency in the City of Pecosin on February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, as we're all aware, we, along with our region, got quite a bit of snow last week in, in reference of the governor's declared state of emergency. I, in your capacity as Director of Emergency Management, declared a local emergency on the nineteenth at ten in the morning, excuse me, on the, yeah, that's correct, and, and I have that authority under your emergency operations plan in the Code of Virginia. However, when a director does that, he or she must bring to their, their governing body a resolution of concurrence at the next available regularly scheduled meeting or forty-five days, whichever occurs first. So, apologize for the last-minute ad, but this was the, the next regularly scheduled meeting since the disaster, so we're here today asking you to, to ensure with my declaration.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution declaring a state of emergency in the City of Pecosin on February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Thank you. Christie?
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fie?
Aye.
Mayor Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you, Christie. We'll move on to the comments of the city manager. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you're going to speak more to, to our storm preparation and execution last week, but I would take a, take a second to thank all the folks in Public Works Utilities Fire for working through our snowstorm, which is way bigger than normal for us, and I thought they did a really outstanding job, as they always do. We don't take it for granted, but we sure do appreciate it. And beyond that, I have two other items for this evening. I'm not sure you can get the pointer, or that I can get the pointer to work. Yeah, never mind. The, the issue here, well, let's see if I can, this is may, this may be a total distance issue. What is it? That one?
There it is.
There it is. It's my problem, I just can't see. Well, that won't help me, because I won't be able to point to the right thing. So, as council is aware and community is aware, particularly over the last two months, we've been in lots of discussions about residential speeding. We've done a number of things in response to those requests and continue to do others. And one of the things that we told you that we would do, and we last spoke about this, was, again, to continue, actually, our use of our portable speed signs to give up data to include the eighty-fifth percentile traffic speed, which you will recall from our previous conversation relates to whether or not a road might be eligible for the residential enhanced speeding zone. In order to, to meet the eighty-fifth percentile qualification, eighty-fifth percentile speed would need to be ten or more miles over. What I have, and this is an eyesight problem for me more than anything else, Ren's is first. I apologize if you can't see it, this information is available to anyone that would like to have a copy of it, including council members. But we've done three since we last talked, it was the three roads we identified as first we would do. A reminder, once urban SDK is up, we'll be doing them again. But on Ren's Road, we ran our, our portable speed sign unit from two fourteen to two nineteen. During that period, our unit observed ninety-two hundred and ninety-two vehicles. The posted speed on that road is twenty-five miles an hour. The average speed was twenty-five point seventeen miles an hour. The eightieth percentile, excuse me, eighty-fifth percentile speed was thirty, so it did not the ten-over test. But I would go on to say that the majority of vehicles that were traveling in that road segment that were observed were exceeding the speed limit, at least a little bit, to be more than twenty-five miles an hour. The combined percentage that were exceeding thirty-five, exceeding ten over was right around two point three percent. The, the next is, which one is it, Thomas?
Pastor.
Pastor. It's an eyesight problem, I'm sorry. Pastor was observed January twenty-ninth through February the fifth. Twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-five vehicles were observed during that time. Again, the posted speed limit is twenty-five. The average speed observed was twenty-four point twenty-four miles an hour. The eighty-fifth percentile speed was thirty miles an hour. Again, it did not meet the test for the residential enhanced speed zone. Percentage exceeding the, even twenty-five miles an hour was close to, but not quite, about, it was about forty-five percent, but the percentage that was going ten or more miles over was about two percent. And lastly, I'm sorry. Rich, thank you. Rich Road was observed February sixth through thirteenth. Thirty-seven hundred and twenty vehicles were observed. A reminder, the posted speed limit on Rich Road is twenty-five. The average speed was twenty-four point seven seven. The eighty-fifth percentile speed was thirty-one. Again, it didn't meet the threshold for enhanced speed zone. About, a little more than forty-seven percent of the total traffic was at least over twenty-five point zero miles an hour, and the percentage going thirty-five or more, meaning ten or over, is four point one three percent. So just wanted, told you we would do that and report back the results, and, and these are the results, and again, they're available to anyone that would like to, to see them. And lastly, I just wanted to highlight again the change in the trash schedule coming off of last week's storm. I know we're one day into this, but if your trash collection, normal date- I know we're one day into this, but if your trash collection, normal date was today, they will pick it up tomorrow. If your normal collection date was Tuesday, is Tuesday of this week, they will pick it up on Wednesday. And if your normal collection date was Thursday, they will pick it up on Friday this week, and we should be back on a regular schedule after. One other thing, I mentioned the folks that worked throughout the storm, but I also want to mention some of those same folks that worked together to end up our convenience site on Saturday, even though they had been working overtime for several days in advance of that. They thought, and I agree, that it was important to be able to do that, particularly since with the President's Day holiday, we were not on our normal schedule anyway, and so I commend them for that. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Randy. We'll move on to council directives. Start with Mr. Freeman.
I know the city was back up and operating on Friday, so everyone just did a great job getting that turned around. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Jeanne?
I agree, and the condition of our roads were great. The city works really hard to keep us safe, and it's just so much appreciated.
Thank you, Jeanne. Mr. Southall?
I want to second the comments about the city staff keeping the roads of Pecosin clear during the storm. They did an excellent job. I also want to thank everyone who came here tonight to publicly and personally pay attention to the city government for being here, and for those who are at home who are watching the city's government. It's important that you pay attention to your government. We work for you. I also would like to make a comment that everyone's probably aware of, that the city of Virginia Beach lost two officers during a routine traffic stop, and I ask everybody in Pecosin to keep those officers and their families in your peril.
Thank you, Mr. Southall. Keith?
Yes, thank you. Ditto and everything about getting the city back up to speed last week. I did my part, I stayed in off the road. But for those just a little bit before that, thank the city staff that came out to the food pantry back on the 13th, had some great help. We couldn't do it without them, the day started out very rainy. We got canopies up at the church for the distribution, and I think it was the smiles on the volunteers that came out that helped brighten up the sky and keep the rains away during the thing. We had Caleb Covert, Kiki Duncan, Ashton Hendricks, Thomas was there. The mayor was there, along with the First Lady Teresa, appreciate that. Joe Kokmiglio, wage register, Kat Register's husband, who was also there, our HR director. Stephanie Love was there doing an assessment of everything. Appreciate that. And double kudos to Jessica Hartley of the library. Not only was she there to help out, but she'd also... The library teen advisory board did a Super Bowl collection of soup and crackers, and they provided like 65 bags of that to the people that distribute them. Thanks to them. And one thing that probably isn't noticed too much around here, but for a couple weeks in the last month, I don't know who the gentleman is or gentlemen that were out cleaning up the crate myrtles to get ready for spring, but they were out there every day, some pretty cold days, spraying with hoses to get those things cleaned up. And I felt like stopping and thanking them, but it was too cold, so I'll thank them here for that great work. That's it.
Keith, appreciate your comments, and I want to elaborate a little bit on the food pantry. The facility that Emus Baptist Church provides for use is outstanding. It's certainly a big improvement over what we used before, so just wanted to acknowledge Emus, the membership, and thank them for their contributions. And Keith, I spoke to this before, but just a reminder, with the role that you play, taking that role over from former council member and his wife, Mr. and Ms. Buddy Green, Pat Green, but having you there is the right person at the right place at the right time. So appreciate your contributions for stepping up and taking on that responsibility, and it just demonstrates what it means to be a public servant. Thank you for that. Angie?
I wholeheartedly agree with the accommodations of staff, and then I just wanted to let the public know that items that were on the agenda for the planning commission got a meeting that got canceled due to the storm will be on next month's meeting.
Thank you, Angie. Debbie?
Thank you. I wanted to also thank the city staff and those that are out and about, outside, clearing the roads and making safe travel possible for our citizens, for our schools to get back in school and not the virtual as they were for a few days. To that note, thanks to the teachers and the school administration, and the students, and the parents. It really takes everybody to pull something like that off. So thanks to everyone for making that work, so we can have that valuable instruction and that time that we need for instruction, so there's not other days that would be needed for that. And also, thanks and congratulations to those that were appointed to boards and commissions this evening for their work. Folks on our boards and commissions, they work very hard to have all that come together so city council and other city employees can do the things that we need to do, so we do appreciate that as well.
Thank you, Debbie. If I could elaborate just a little bit more on the staff's contributions during the storm, public work, utilities, they actually worked around the clock in support of our citizens. So just wanted to thank our Public Works Director, Mr. John Anderson, Mr. Chad Garrick, our Utilities Superintendent, and all the folks on staff for their contributions. Of course, the Fire and Police Department, they normally work around the clock, but in this case, I know the Fire Department added some extra staff just to make sure that our needs were met. So thank you to Chief Mike Bryant and all those at the Fire Department, as well as Chief Stephen Cates and all those at the Police Department. And did want to note that the new loader that we just requisitioned has already been delivered, so I think that's a good example of government efficiency in a matter of just a very few short weeks, since that need was identified. We've gone through the motions, so thank you to staff for that, and we actually have that new piece of equipment serving the city on-site. So pretty remarkable, I think. I'd also like to thank Mr. Michael Thompson for helping us with the IT support and the audiovisual. Could not do these meetings without those folks. Also, I wanted to comment again, just to further reinforce our strong financial position, what our AAA bond rating does for us. As Kyle from Davenport and Company included tonight, because of our strong bond rating, we had no less than six lending institutions competing for our business. We went out for the general obligation bond to finance the replacement HVAC system at the high school, resulted in a 4.27 interest rate, which is actually below what we had anticipated. So we thank staff for their contributions, getting us from where we were to where we are now. It was about a nine-year process, and we achieved that bond rating in 2018 under the guidance and leadership of our city manager, Mr. Randy Wheeler. And also wanted to speak again to the efficiency and the redundancy that we have when it comes to our financial management. We have our staff of certified public accountants, and even though our manager is not a CPA, one of his many strong points involves financial expertise. So that's another layer that we have. Our city attorney, Mr. Wayne Moore, with his decades in the legal practice, he's also assessed quite a bit of financial expertise, so always watching over what we do. So just to remind the public that everything we do as council is done under the auspices of Mr. Moore and his legal counsel, so we certainly appreciate that. We have Davenport and Company, which serves as our financial advisor, and in addition to that, we have our bond counsel, Sands Anderson, and company that are also out of Richmond. So that's the depth of the redundancy that we have making these financial decisions. And in addition to that, our council members, we don't claim to be financial subject matter experts, but we are pretty proficient, and we're good, strong laypeople, and we do bring our own experiences to the table when we make these decisions as well. Very thankful to be where we are. So by the grace of God, go we, and looking forward to a bright future here in Pecosin. And with that, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
Before we do, sir?
Yes, sir.
I may.
Yes, sir.
And I forgot until just now, I read before coming here tonight that of the passing of David Callis, who worked for the city for so many years and a conservative personal friend, and my heart kind of hurt a little bit knowing that he has left us, but he won't be soon forgotten.
Thank you, Keith. Yeah, Dave's contributions over the years were certainly noteworthy. He worked for the city for about 34 years, if I'm not mistaken. He is a friend to all, has been missed since his retirement. Our prayers and thoughts certainly go out to the Callis family. Thank you, Keith. Any other questions or comments? That being said, can we have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Christie?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunty?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hux, excuse me, Mayor Hux. Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Thank you, Christie. We are adjourned.